A nomination for Vice Chair.
I nominate Dave.
There you go.
Is there a second? All those, any other people? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Do you have a motion for someone to take the position of Clerk?
Oh, you guys have to pick a new Clerk because it can't be Clerk and Chair, Vice Chair.
Well, no, this is Clerk of the Board. This is what Jeff Martin successfully...
I would like to nominate Jeff Martin.
I second that.
That was a very tricky one.
Uh huh. Any other one? Jeff, do you accept the nomination?
I do.
Okay.
I asked before.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? A nomination for Assistant Board Clerk.
I think it's been me and I'm happy to do that.
I nominate Kelly.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? These we're going to address in discussion matters.
Mm-hmm.
But the local standards board, do we need to nominate that now?
We don't have to, no.
Okay.
That can be done.
Okay. So that, that sets us up for another year. I want to welcome our newest Board Member, Angela Arsenal from Williston. She is occupying the seat vacated by Kevin Mara. So, welcome to Board. And just real quickly, I mean, she's met a bunch of us already. But if you could just quickly go through and just say your names. Sorry, Ray. We can start with Kyle.
I'm Lenny.
I'm Kyle, we're Kyle and Williston members. Jeff Martin, crucial.
Jocelyn Adams from Williston.
Barbara Madden, Shelburne.
Brendan McMahon, CBSD.
Yeah, that's it. Jean Jensen, CLO.
Elaine Pinkney, Superintendent.
Lynn Johnick.
I'm Dave Colerham from Shelburne.
Hi, Dave.
Russ Cafrey from Shelburne.
Erin Brady from Williston.
Kelly Bowen, St. George.
Jeff Evans, Sarah Kupfer.
Mark LeTromax, Director of...
Megan Roy, Director of Student Support Services.
Sandy Raymond, Elaine's Assistant.
And Colleen, can you hear anything?
Yes, I can, Lynn.
Aye.
This is Colleen McKinnon.
Yes, on the phone. Adjustments to the agenda, I have just a few. We're going to delete 6.6 Integrated Field Review and 7.5 Integrated Field Review. And under 7.1 approve the calendar last student day and faculty day. The last faculty day should read June 19th of 2019. And I think that is it for adjustments. Does anyone else have any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay. No one wants to discuss the audit? I'm crushed.
I'll move the audit out of...
You want to move the audit out of?
No.
No.
This coming from the one person who asked questions of the audit.
Brendan had a bunch of questions at the last meeting, true, for the auditor.
Carry on the tradition.
So on to 4.0, Audience and Communications. So the purpose of this is for anyone, it's an opportunity for the public to address the Board on any matter that is not on the agenda. Or if there is an action item under the agenda, this is the opportunity for you to address the Board, would be at this time. And I didn't thank you. Thanks, Paige. Okay. So Paige, you are up.
Hi, my name is Paige Chu. I'm a senior here at CBU High School. I'm also a student co-leader of the Racial Alliance Committee newly formed this past school year. I'm here to talk about our proposal to raise the Black Lives Matter flag at CBU. It's an action item on today's agenda. And we really appreciate you taking our proposal seriously and acting on it at this point. I'd just like to give you an update on the support that we've received thus far. In addition to the many signatures we got in our petition, we got a documented verbalized support video from Cory Booker, who is a junior United States Senator from New Jersey and also a 2020 Democratic Presidential candidate hopeful. We've also received written support from Lieutenant Governor David Zuckerman, an additional 60-plus signatures on our online petition. So totaling over 800, we also received our petition last meeting. I'd also like to revoice that raising the Black Lives Matter flag at CBU is not and has never been the end goal of RAC's efforts. Regardless of the flag flying, RAC will continue to educate the student body on Black Lives Matter and will strive to further advocate for racial equity in our communities. However, we really hope to not be alone in this endeavor. By proposing to raise the Black Lives Matter flag from February to the end of each school year at CBU, RAC is asking the administration of our school for support and for solidarity in our hard work as student leaders. Many productive conversations have already been started by this process. And in order to continue these conversations, long past February, far outside of RAC or School Board meetings, we hope that you vote in favor of our proposal today. From all of us student activists and allies, we thank you for your consideration, time, and commitment to making CBU a more inclusive and equitable place for the students who now need it most. Thank you.
Thanks, Paige. Peter?
Hi, my name is Peter Langella. I'm one of CBU's Librarians and I've been working with the Racial Alliance Committee as an advisor. I'm here to express my support for raising the Black Lives Matter flag at our school. I hope this step can help us move forward on the issues of race and racism in our community in a more proactive way. This is just one step in a series of essential systemic and structural changes we can make. As parents first expressed to you last month, it is essential that CBSD move intentionally, yet as quickly as you can, to hire a diversity and inclusion specialist and to change our hiring practices to seek out candidates of color who can transform the faces of our collective faculty to better mirror our increasingly racially diverse student body. If we don't have a diverse applicant pool, there's no way we can hire diverse teachers. At your last meeting, the conversation around this proposal was about when and how, not if. And I hope that's still the case tonight. Please, let's raise the Black Lives Matter flag and move this conversation forward in earnest. Many other educators and I will be proud to help you with an educationally rich flag-raising process and the successful implementation of new policies, structures, and systems that we can create. The district needs the push that you, this Board, can give us. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Elizabeth Deutsch?
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Deutsch and I'm a community member of Heinsburg. I wanted to come back to this meeting again to, again, support the student leaders of RAC and let the Board know that I am strongly in support of raising the Black Lives Matter flag, especially in light of the fact that unless we do something as the parents, the educators, and the Board to dismantle the systemic racism within our society, we will continue to subject the children of our communities to unfair practices. And I think that opening the communication by raising the flag and making the symbolic gesture is really important towards dismantling that systemic racism. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Okay, is that, did I get everybody?
If you didn't sign up, you can still speak. You don't have to sign up.
Okay. Thank you. 5.0, 5.1, Presentations, Students, Creative and Practical Problem Solving. What I Do With Information.
Okay, so thank you. We are going to, I'm going to quickly contextualize where we were in terms of presentation, where we are now, and then hand it over to some teachers from our district who are going to talk to you about some of their practices. Just a reminder that the focus for the year, the purpose was to understand the current system of practices in place to support all our students in efforts to become proficient and the expectations set forth by the state and by our district. And at the presentations, we're going to focus on two highlighting bullets, how this impacts pedagogy across content areas and grade bands, and how that pedagogy impacts student experiences, ownership, and growth. Quick reminder of where we have been. Our first presentations addressed, we had our teacher from AP Calc come in and talk to us about the class largely with juniors and seniors in it and show how she was using that standards-based pedagogy. And then we had the Williston Blended Model teachers come in and talk to us on that same evening about some of the things they did. And so now today, we've got, in an effort to really provide a varied representation, we have kindergarten teacher who's come to us today to talk and show us what it looks like there. And then we also have science in the middle level from Charlotte. So we'll start with Heinsburg. And a couple people are joining Miranda. Miranda Johnson is the teacher from the kindergarten at Heinsburg. And by the way, the Sanford Teacher of the Year for 2019 this year.
That's right.
It's a great honor. She's our Vermont winner. And she has a couple folks who are going to join us there, Sarah Schoolcraft and Monica Carter, who are instructional coaches who've been supporting that work and a lot of the work being done at K4 around learning targets and proficiencies. So I am just going to hand it over. Miranda and crew. Oh, and one last thing, my fault. If you have clarifying questions, feel free to ask. But any other questions, let's hold off until all the presenters have gone and then we'll ask them at the same time. Got it?
No, it's just us. Oh. Yes. Okay. I'd like a clean shot. Okay. Can I have a clean shot the whole time?
Good evening. My name is Sarah Schoolcraft. I'm an instructional coach building based at Heinsburg and I'm doing some work this year across the district in K4 at the other schools as well. So this year, just to provide a little bit of context to our presentation tonight, last year, Heinsburg teachers all worked collaboratively for the year on developing learning targets and scales by grade level across content areas. They were able, towards the end of the year, to look back and revise their work, specifically in writing. This year, going into the school year, we already had drafts across the grade levels, K, well, K4 and then obviously 5A, we have common targets. And so the drafts of our reading targets, in particular in Heinsburg, were really in a great working spot to be able to embed our work at Heinsburg in the mind play pilot. So we've been doing ongoing professional development this year, really around early literacy practices. And that professional development has really driven our work in the revision of our learning targets. In particular, we've had some great learning and revision around the areas, including phonemic awareness, really at all grades K through 4. So this, our coaching and our studios have been really focused around kind of making that professional development transparent and connect it to our learning target work.
Thank you. My name is Miranda Johnson. I am a kindergarten teacher at Heinsburg. And as Sarah said, we've been spending a lot of our professional development time developing these learning scales and targets. This year, we've really focused on the reading. And I think you have a handout that shows you the three kindergarten targets that we've developed. At this point, we're using these scales mostly as teachers to develop our instruction and look at assessments and think about a group of students and what activities they might need to move along the scale. We had the opportunity several weeks ago to engage in a studio. We invited some of my students to stay on the Tuesday early release day. And they were so excited. You wouldn't think kids would want to stay for extra school if they didn't happen to have to, but they thought it was great, so they had a little snack. And then about eight of my students, so about half of my class was able to stay. And we had, I had recently finished a formative assessment from our phonics program. And I had seen some areas where there were some misconceptions. Children were not proficient in a couple different skills. So I developed some activities for the studio for them to really hone in on those skills and practice them and hopefully move along the scales. So tonight, we're going to show you some video clips from that studio lesson. The first one we're going to show you is a clip of us practicing some phonemic awareness. So we need blending onset and rise to them. So I say, if I say "at" and you add "er" to the beginning, we'll have "set", what word do you make? And that was an area that they really needed a little extra practice in. So I'll have Jess start that one. Add "s" to the beginning and the word is? "At". Add a "b" to the beginning and the word is? "Act". Add a "t" to the beginning and the word is? Now I'm going to say a word in a different way. "Tan". Without "t", the word is? "Bad". Without "b", the word is? "Cat". Without "p", the word is? "Wax". Without "w", the word is? "Lam". Without "u", the word is? I'm going to do. So you can see I'm trying to really get them, they're supposed to be doing the hand motions, having that sort of multi-sensory approach to hopefully really engrain those skills. In the next clip, you're going to see, we're working on the alphabetic principle. There has, there was some confusion about lowercase "b" and lowercase "d", which is a totally normal, common kindergarten confusion. But it was something that I really wanted to work on with them. As well as when we are writing and reading simple, we call them CVC words, so consonant, vowel, consonant, like "web" and "cat". Several of my students were struggling with the short "e" versus the short "i", so we, I really focused on those words. And we wrote them in shaving cream, which was really engaging for them. They love, you can see having that tactile experience. So you'll see us working, working on that here. Nice job. Then come back down.
I know why most of them stayed.
So in the third clip, you're going to see, we moved back to the rug and we have magnetic letter boards that we use to do a very similar activity, just in a different way. So I would say a sound and they would have to find the letter tile. Or I would say a word and they would have to build it. Again, really focusing on those sounds that I knew that they were kind of struggling with. Your last word is "web". "Web". "W". "F". "B". "Web". "W". "B". "B". No, no, I can't. What is that? Did you have that? Okay, tell me how to spell "web". F3. W. W. E. T. Check your board. All right, so children's back. And then we close the lesson. We don't have a video clip of it, but each child was given a word, a consonant, vowel, consonant word that they had to read, just to check and make sure that they've mastered the, sort of, pointed the lesson. And they did great. They, at this point, have really moved along that scale and they're either at a 3 or a 4 for the most part. Did you read? Go next.
Yeah, I can wrap it up. Hi, everybody. I'm Monica Carter. Long time ago, I was a math teacher here and now I'm a proficiency-based learning coach here at CBU halftime and over at Heinsburg Community School for the other half of my time. And what I wanted to show you was Sarah and Miranda talked to you about the processes that we've gone through with our reading targets this year. We went through a similar process last year with writing targets. And there are really two purposes to writing a learning target and stretching it out into a proficiency scale, this thing that you see up here. One purpose is for a teacher to be able to know what they're trying to do with kids and identify where kids are in terms of their level of proficiency, so they can then design instruction that helps move kids to or beyond proficiency on the scale. The other purpose of the scale is to guide student learning. And when students are older and can read, that's easier to do because we can give them something that looks like those scales at the top and they can use it to reflect on their work and set some goals for themselves. But when they're younger and they can't read yet, sometimes they need some visual prompts to reflect on their work. So one of the things that our kindergarten and first grade teachers did with our writing targets was they created these visual scales to help kids remember and internalize what the scale was asking them to do, so that then they could use it to reflect on their work and set goals, even if they couldn't read all of the, all of the language that's there. So in this last clip, we, we wanted to show you Miranda working with one of our students who's reflecting on a piece of writing and setting some goals for herself.
It's usually what we find in pictures. So take a look at your picture and then look at the scale and think about where you think you would be on the scale for your picture. Let's look together. This one here says for one star, "I can draw a picture, but it does not relate to my topic." So you drew a picture, but does it relate to your topic? Did you draw a fish? Yeah. And fish food, that's true. So you're definitely not a one. How about here? "I can draw a picture of my topic." Did you do that? Yeah? All right, so that would be two stars. Let's look here at the three stars here. It says, "I can draw a picture with labels that teaches about my topic." Maybe here. Which one are you pointing at? Maybe here? So can you show me where you put the label in your picture? Oh, probably here. So you want to move over to here to? Why did you just want to go back over here to? Because there's some labels. I'm wondering, it's a beautiful picture of a fish and a fish food. But I'm wondering if you could teach people in this picture? Is there something you could add to help your readers know? You could add labels, absolutely. That would be so helpful. So bottom, I think down here on the bottom, maybe we can make a writing goal for you. Do you know what a goal is? Sure. Yeah, goal is something, what do you think a goal is? Is it like a ball? That's a way of thinking about it, yeah. Something you want to work towards, right? Something that you want to get better at. So I think, do you think, can you think of something in writing that you could work on based on what we just talked about? What did we just say that you could add to your picture here? Details and labels. Would that be a good goal for you? So in your, in your fixtures, you could work on adding teaching pieces, labels, close-ups, details. So I'm going to write that here so that you remember the next time you're writing, you'll know what you want to be working on. Okay? Awesome. So you can see, I mean, she needed a lot of scaffolding to use that scale, but I think as we use them more and more, they're going to become much more comfortable with them. So we're hoping to use, to continue with our work with our reading scales and eventually math and make them, you know, use them with our students every day so that they're really comfortable doing that.
Thank you. Thank you, Heinsburg. Appreciate it. Now we're going to jump from kindergarten up into seventh, eighth grade, science. And when I was talking to folks about people who, who do a good job of representing some of the practices that are emerging in our classrooms, Nancy's name came up over and over again. Somebody who's done a really good job of stacking learning experiences on top of each other around the same targets or skills and building a really deep understanding and deep knowledge. And so I went and met with her a couple times, watched her students. Really was impressed with the kind of learning that's happening in there. She's going to share some of them with us. So Nancy Matthews from Charlotte.
Good evening. Thanks for having me tonight. So I just want to give you a little background in terms of science for seventh, eighth at Charlotte. So I am the only seventh, eighth science teacher at Charlotte. We loop, so I do a two-year curriculum. So some students will have some topics as a seventh grader. Other students get it as an eighth grader, but we do this two-year curriculum loop. I see them four times a week for 50 minutes. That's all I got. So one of the things Jeff asked me to look at was, or to talk to you about, was how proficiency-based learning and the NGSS, the new Next Generation Science Standards, are working, how I'm working with those together. So there were times when, in the past, I might present some information. We would maybe take some notes on it. We'd do a reading. I'd introduce some labs that were related to that. Now, with the Next Generation Science Standards, we're really sort of flipping it. So I'm introducing phenomenon because those standards really are focusing on scientific phenomenon and trying to explain that. So starting with that and then trying to have the kids sort of take apart or figure out what we need to learn about in order to understand that phenomenon. So I'm going to talk to you tonight about a lesson. We're in this sort of, it's a series of lessons, but starting on planning an investigation. So the first thing that I want to just mention, if you're not familiar with NGSS standards, are we have the three, it's three dimensions. So there's the disciplinary core ideas. That's our content. That's, you know, facts and things, what they need to know. There's also cross-cutting concepts. Those are the big, broad concepts that go across science. Things like structure and function, stability and change, energy and matter. Things that no matter whether you're talking about physical science, earth science, biology, life sciences, they, they go across all of those, which is why they call them cross-cutting concepts. And then the third of the dimensions is the science and engineering practices. And at CBSD, we've decided to focus our common learning targets on, with using those practices. And the whole idea is those practices are what, when you're doing science, what are you doing? You're asking questions, you're planning investigations, you're collecting data, you're analyzing data, you're writing scientific explanations, you're engaged in arguments, you're having to communicate your findings. So those practices, that's what we're focused on. And no matter what unit I'm teaching and we're going through, we keep coming back to those same practices. So you need to be able to graph any kind of data that we collect, right? You need to be able to analyze any kind of data. So it really is, those few targets seem like only a handful of targets, but it really doesn't matter because we can hit with new content those same targets over and over. So let's look at that lesson.
Description, sure.
Description quickly. So we are, the performance task that we're working towards is planning an investigation to provide evidence that the change in an object's motion depends upon the sum of the forces on the object and the mass of the object. This is another example of, that's kind of a huge standard, right? There's a lot in there. You've got to know what forces are acting, how do they act, how do we sum them? So it's a lot of steps. So I've been taking this apart and we've been doing a series of investigations. We started with some paper helicopters and really looked at how air resistance and gravity influence a free-falling object. We've been using some carts and ramps and looking at friction and gravity and so forth. And so this last one, or the lesson that I want to share with you, what the students are getting started with, is looking at the support force and how does that, does that oppose gravity or not oppose gravity? So you'll see the learning target here, we're hoping to get them to, "I can plan a fair, clearly described investigation that provides evidence to answer a scientific question." Now, I've already, we've done a series of investigations. I'm confident that most of them are here. I can give them, here's the investigation we want to look at, the paper helicopters ones, for instance. I gave them their steps and they were clearly able to collect data. So now it's their turn to try and do the planning of the investigation. And along the way, I'm scaffolding it. So this first time, and what you're going to see parts of, they are, they're going to be planning this investigation that's related to a phenomenon that I introduced. Let's see.
Want to shut up?
Yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
So this is Nancy describing the changes.
Question we're going to try and answer, "How does the angle of the ramp affect the amount of force needed to move the cart along that ramp?" So your task, which you can see right here on your sheet, is designing the investigation to gather evidence that helps you answer your experimental question. Now, I am going to not just like throw it wide open to you. You are going to have some constraints. So those bullets are, you must design, your design must use a ramp, a cart, and 150 gram weights. Right? So you've got to have the carts, the weights, and a ramp. The second bullet is, you must test at least five different ramp angles, one of which must be zero degrees and one must be at least eight. So if you've got five angles, right, and you're going to do a series of angles, one must be zero and one must be at least eight. Right? Does that make sense? So we're going to move the cart along these. Got it? Okay. What's the last constraint? Oh, you must measure the force in you, so you're going to have to use those spring scales, right? We're going to measure the force. So when you think about it, what are some, what do people say they're going to do with their spring scales and cart and ramp? So yesterday, we talked about what can be done. Yeah? So I introduced this, the phenomenon that I introduced was, you know, you're walking along the road and it's a flat surface and all of a sudden you get to a hill. And now it all of a sudden seems much harder to walk up a hill than it does across the flat surface. We talked about how, does that, did anything really change? We talked about what are the influences, what are the forces that are acting? And, you know, gravity, we think about the distance and mass. Well, you haven't changed your mass and other things. So we came down to it must be the support force that's changed. So really, the friction isn't any different. So I said to them, all right, so if we're going to try and figure this out, we've only, we don't have a way to measure you pushing off on the floor as we're walking or up a hill, so we're going to model it with some carts and ramps. So I gave them the carts, the ramps, the weight, and spring scales and basically said, "You need to figure out a way to design an investigation where you can collect accurate data that's going to show how much force it takes to move a cart up these ramps." So here's a clip of some of them have, so their first thing was they had to figure out what angles they wanted to test and then how are you going to get the ramps at those angles? So you'll see what some of the things that came up.
Yeah, this first one's them figuring out what angles to use.
So that's what some of them came up with. The next clip is looking at how are they actually going to do the measurement of force?
Yeah, what I had noticed in walking around was many of them had these epiphanies around how to use the spring scale, because a lot of them were just dragging the cart up the ramp with their hands and then realizing, well, I can't do that at a constant rate. So how am I going to, how am I going to measure this? And so I started asking them questions the next clips to explain their thinking.
Oh, okay. So we are going to measure with the weights in this cup.
Yeah.
Then going to measure the cup with the weights in by this to see how many weights it took.
And why is that better than just pulling on the? Got it.
And this one as well. So those were the group of seventh graders and here's a group of eighth graders. And I think, Jeff, you asked a similar question to this group as well.
Very similar, because I watch, they're aha. Okay, now I got to go. Okay, so this is 80 degrees, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So how many books is that? So 14 books got to 80 degrees. Tell me what's going on over here with the cup and the string and the spring scale. Okay. So then, does that mean the spring scale is attached to the cup?
Yeah, but we're going to take it off.
Oh, so you're going, why are you going to take it off?
Um, so it's more contact.
So that we can like read it easier.
Yeah.
So when, how will you read it?
After we do the task, we attach it to the cup and then see what the forces pulled up.
Got it. Got it. Okay, thank you.
This last one shows a group actually testing their setup at an angle.
So what angle are you guys working at right now? This is 20 degrees, okay? Oh, there you go. So how much weight did Jeff use to do that? 1.3. Excellent, thank you.
So once they've, once they've figured out what angles and how they got it working, then they went ahead and ran their investigation and collected data. The other thing I wanted to just mention is we're working on also providing benchmarks. So if we have these handful of common targets, one of the things that's necessary as we go from content area to content area is to be able to show how the same scale and target can be addressed. And so we're working on developing these benchmarks, I think the high school's further along than we are. But it allows for the key components within the scale to be explained. And in your packets, you'll see there's a couple of different ones. So that on the back, on the front side is the explanation for the scale and on the backside, you'll see our some benchmarks. Some of them are, some of them we have our student work or ones that we've developed ourselves. So taking this investigation that they planned, we've collected data and then we've analyzed data, so I've assessed them on that, they've graphed it. We just, some of them have already done a force diagram, so modeling the forces that are on that and we'll use that as part of our evidence and reasoning to support a claim. So that's sort of where we're at.
So, yeah, you've heard me talk a lot about all the common targets we've created, how they're connected to grad standards and how grad standards are connected to the five leave penings. So now we can see some examples of how they actually play out in the classroom, where a target drives instruction, drives self-reflection by the students, and then also ultimately drives assessment as well. So do we have any questions for either of our presenters?
I have a question. So I think this is very cool, like as opposed to be given a lab and say, follow A, B, C, D, and E and, you know, then write down your results. I think this is really cool. But there are a lot of kids in that room. How do you know that you're, how do I say this without sounding like, are you able to really get what everybody is accurately place them on the scale, especially if they're working in teams?
I wouldn't say from this one activity and this one time, no. Over time and multiple opportunities, I get a much better sense of that, yes.
So you're?
And this, this would, will be scored a formative assessment several times, but to do a summative assessment, especially for the planning and investigation, they'll have to do that independently. So I'll give them a new experimental question and ask them to design an investigation on their own. So they'll, they'll have my support as we get started with the scaffolding and the, I have a template that they can work through and they can work with groups. But in terms of their summative assessments, those are done individually.
Individually.
Yeah.
You'll see this sort of gradual release of responsibility a lot of times in the classroom where it starts with the teacher does it for everybody, then the teacher does it with the students, and the students go together, and then the student does it from the back way.
In the kindergarten example, it's so interesting to see it brought down to their level and obviously the clarity of outcomes and learning is so important. But I wonder, how do you balance the sort of, at those lower grades, as we move to proficiency-based learning, that it doesn't start to get them a little bit in a comparative sense of seeing, oh, there's a one, a two, a three, and a four? You know, admittedly, I'm coming from a high school lens where we're trying to break students of a sort of grade obsession or comparative obsession. And so sometimes I worry a little with really young kids seeing, oh, I could be doing, obviously we want all students to do better, but to worry about comparisons across, am I a one, a two, a three, or a four? Have some kind of concept in their mind even of sort of an evaluation and keeping it from that for kindergarten, you know, kindergarten, first, second grade, so it doesn't feel evaluative in that sense, like it's the learning, obviously, but it's a convoluted question. But this sort of psychology of proficiency-based learning at such a young age.
Yeah, I think that's sort of something we're going to have to explore as we begin to use those targets more with students because that would be, you know, that would be really detrimental to their learning. But I think a lot of it comes from the way the teachers are that set too. So that's something we'll be exploring for sure.
And I also think a lot of teachers have gotten away from even associating numbers with it. Just saying, this is a continuum. Identify where you are with the continuum. There's an arrow up there. We're always kind of trying to move plus one regardless of where you are on that continuum.
And, oh, sorry.
John Corr Kelly, huh?
So I also have an earlier question. As you continue to refine your practice, I'm just wondering what impact you're seeing, particularly with those very young students who might be struggling somewhat more in acquiring reading and writing skills and whether you feel like you have more effective methods now than you used to to be able to affect positive change? And my second point about that is because you have to teach in groups so often, I'm wondering if you think that that might impact assist those students who might be struggling or is it potentially a hindrance when they get lost in that group situation? If so, do you have enough time to do individual one-to-one work with students who might need additional assistance?
Sure, so I'll go with your second question first, if you don't mind. But we, I think being part of the group is really beneficial for them. I think they learn from each other. And sort of like you were talking about with the gradual release of responsibility, we do, we do that even at the kindergarten level, you know, we do a lot together, but then I'm also checking in with them individually in a lot of different ways. And the really young kids, I mean, they, they just are so enthusiastic about learning in general. I feel like they don't even really know necessarily what I'm assessing them. They just think it's, you know, part of the fun and they're excited to show what they know and, you know, I've, I've really tried to frame assessments like this is what I need to know, so I know what I need to teach. So we kind of frame it that way, I guess. And then in terms of the first question, you know, we know more now than we did then. I think we, we are really lucky to have the model that we have and to have our coaches who can help us through with this learning process because we're really just learning it, you know, as we go to and continuing to figure out what is appropriate to use with our students and what's more for our knowledge, so.
Last question?
Yeah, and I was just thinking, as you refine the criteria here, is this something like, I know that the district works with a lot of the preschools in the area, so is this literacy chart, like these targets, things that are going to go to the preschool folks first and you can act as a guide, what we're going to like to see in the kindergarten to give that head start in reading?
Yeah, I know that's an ongoing conversation in our district. You know, we have a committee that's meeting for, you know, what's expected in kindergarten. I'm not sure if the learning targets will be shared. I'm not sure if it's been decided yet, but I think it's certainly something that could be discussed. You know, I worry to keep pushing it down and down and down because I think it's real, personally, I think preschool is really important, social, emotional, you know, I don't want them to get too fixated on those early literacy skills because I think they will develop as kids grow, but I think it's definitely worth discussing.
Well, thank you very much, the teachers.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to six point, oh, reports to the board. Six point one committees.
Six point one committees. Six point one, finance, budget, and facilities.
So, the last meeting, we had our budget debrief, and we identified five areas of things that we want to look at next year.
Is that on, I'm sorry, Brendan, is that on the agenda later? Budget debrief is an agenda item?
It is seven point two.
Yeah.
I'll just move my, I'll talk about the budget process and the increase in seven point two.
Perfect. Sorry.
Do you want to say anything about the audit, since?
Of course he does.
Yeah, absolutely. Audit, as always, Jean and Elaine did a great job. The audit is, looks pretty clean. I don't think we're gonna have any issues. I have some questions about it, but we're gonna move forward with, with how it stands.
Any other questions? Okay, six point one, point two, human resources and labor relations.
I wasn't here last week.
Did you guys meet last week?
Yeah.
We met with the association, or they did, and I'm guessing that's probably a matter for executive session.
Yeah, you guys didn't meet as a committee.
Two weeks ago, we talked about it.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Six point two, Colt.
Colt, I hope everybody read the report, and especially our meetings with the high school leadership groups, because it's really a great-
Well, should we expand on what we talked a little bit about at your evaluation? What Ray brought up, about adding board members?
Oh, right, yes. So we, when Lynn and I talk about this, we talk in such glowing terms, and make it so exciting to get up at seven o'clock in the morning to be at CDU to meet with these kids that are, all of you, I know many of you are in these committee, on these groups, councils, or whatever, that when I was sharing with the board at my evaluation meeting, Ray said, can the rest of us go to these meetings? Right, so we said, well, we should figure out a structure to do that, because it really is a wonderful experience to go and hear what the kids themselves are talking about, and how they're seeing things, and just to see how they discuss things with each other, and you've had that experience right here. So, I hope you did, do, do read that part. I had a couple things, Megan, that I thought you might update us on the pre-kindergarten, what's going on there, or not, and then maybe if you could say something about the OTPT section that you wrote.
So, there had been, and you've probably heard us talk about this last year, Act 166, our universal pre-K law, there was legislation last year that went almost all the way up through the end of the year to kind of fix some of the issues, particularly around the fact that two state agencies oversee it, and that there's a lot of duplication and a lot of confusion. That bill didn't pass last year, there was, it was sort of reintroduced in a similar fashion this year to have the agency of education fully take it on. Then there was a different bill that was proposing to have the agency of human services fully take it over, which is a version of what's here, but most recently, crossover was last week, and there was not a, a bill addressing pre-K coming through crossover. So, what that means is that Act 166, as we currently implement it, will continue to be implemented that same way.
And we have no issues with that. I mean, we've been, we've been partnering for so many years, we've really figured out-
We can weather the hiccups better than other places in the state. There are hiccups, there are things about it that are frustrating, but they're not insurmountable, and we're still, we're going through it.
Then the OTPT.
Yeah. So, I mean, one of the things that I would highlight, and there's a lot in here, we have fantastic group of professionals who work together around related services, but focusing, we have this team partially because of all of our work in consolidation, and it's a really great example of a way that we've unified our approach, our practice, become more consistent, but also been able to use these resources beyond just kid by kid by kid, because preconsolidation, when individual schools contracted with a physical therapist, you really limit how you use them. You use them to come in and work with a student or a team, and then leave, because it's cost prohibitive to do anything else. And now that they are on staff employees, and have established themselves, they provide training, they work with teachers, they look at patterns, you know, our occupational therapist at the high school said, wow, I get a lot of referrals for drivers, driver's ed and driver's rehab, why don't we think of a better way to do this instead of contracting all the time? Or at the younger grades, I get a lot of referrals for handwriting, maybe we should do some workshops on handwriting instruction. So, I think it's just, we have a great team, but it's also a nice example of, we can do it much better when we pool our resources.
Thank you.
I just, I'll mention real quickly, the integrated field reviews. We received from the AOE a rough draft of our report about our integrated field review. We then went through it with the lead design team assigned to this task, and took notes, and I have a call scheduled for Friday with the state to share our thoughts and our clarifying questions, then they will write the final report and have it to us soon. So I anticipate having it in time for our next committee meeting to share with the indicators committee. Also then, meet with all the principals around Robin, and pull together a plan for how to share it with faculty, staffs, students, communities, and yourselves.
Thank you. Any other questions on the Colt report? Six point three, principals report. Any questions? Six point four, student council. Kyle, you're on your own tonight.
I am, unfortunately. So this month, the biggest event that we had on student council was the CDU blood drive. That was last Thursday. We came into the day with about seventy donors signed up, and then about noon, we had so many people walk in that they were backed up for the rest of the day, and I think we may have gotten to a hundred donors.
Wow.
Very great day. The second thing I added to the report was an update on the teacher feedback pilot that we ran earlier this year. And I added in the questions that was given, so I put it out there to all CDU teachers if they wanted to take part in this. It was a Moodle survey, which is the thing that all CDU teachers use, and they just put it out to their students and gave them some class time to take it. And I wanted to get feedback from the teachers, actually, on how it went in their classes, and the feedback was useful for them and stuff. And I added some of the comments that I got. And then, last Tuesday, I was gonna meet with the CDU leadership team to talk about next steps in getting this implemented for all classes. Unfortunately, that was postponed, so I think that will happen next week, if there are any questions on that.
How long have you been working on that?
It started last year in the fall, so a long time.
Thank you. Six point five, second quarter FMR.
I'll take that. So, we're forecasting to end up just a little bit better than budget, primarily due to some increased revenues that we're, we've seen coming in. One big caveat I'd like the board to keep in mind is that we're kind of out on a limb on our HRA forecast. If you remember, we budgeted for about a sixty percent usage on the HRA, that's what's in the budget. When we did the best we could to figure out what we'd spent in the first six months of the fiscal year, it was roughly half of that, so we forecasted that we're gonna use roughly the other half of that.
I'm sorry, when you say half of that, you mean half of the whole potential obligation?
Of the sixty percent.
Or half of the sixty?
Half of the budget, the sixty percent.
So we've spent thirty percent of the obligation?
Right, exactly.
Thank you.
That's a little bit at risk, because if you remember, the healthcare reimbursement accounts reset on January first, so there's a potential that all of a sudden people's bucket of money they can access is full again. So there could be a little, a little more usage. So that's a bit of a risk. On the other hand, as I know you all read in the audit report, the, the, some of the money that's in our first half of our fiscal year probably belongs to the prior year. We have had, it's been a nightmare trying to unravel the data path, future planning, numbers, and we're sure we have, we're sure we have all the FY18 numbers captured, we just don't, may not have been the right year. So, we have offsetting penalties there, so we decided that the best we could do is say, we've used half, we're gonna use the other half in the second half, but let's not go spend that two-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand until we get a little more, a little more behind us. But that's really the, the story. Everything else is pretty much tracking, some, some of the spending's running a little hot, but we're tamping that down. I think we're pretty good at this forecast.
Any other questions on the FMR?
No, I did want to mention that the, the construction fund tracker, that's a, I'm gonna have to turn that around next, you know, it's going this way, this, right, I have to turn it around for next quarter, because I have to add the twenty-six projects that we're gonna do with the million dollars that was supported by the, our very generous community to help us make some really important improvements to our building facilities, so that list's gonna get a lot longer for next quarter.
Put it on legal science papers or something.
That's right. A little fold out.
Okay, thank you. Seven point O, discussion matters. Seven point one, this will come up for action next month, this is just discussion to approve the 2018-19 calendar, that's this year, last student and faculty day.
So, we've had three snow days. The current calendar has us ending on the last day, the thirteenth, when you add those three snow days, that would bring us to the seventeenth, or the eighteenth, and we have one professional development day built in. So what we're recommending is that we, the board would approve ending the student year on Friday, the fourteenth, and we would translate those additional snow days to professional development days. This is what you've done in the past, and there's plenty of work for us to do during that time, so that's what's up for discussion.
Does anyone have any input, questions? Graduation is the fourteenth.
Graduation is the fourteenth for the high school, and it's the thirteenth for the K8s.
For the K8s. Okay. Any other discussion?
So we have extra instructional days versus the requirement that we have for a year.
Yes, right. One-seventy-five is the requirement, and we add four days.
So if we lose three, we're still ahead by a day.
Right.
I actually was thinking about this, this could get tricky with RISE, right? Because that's a set, if, that's a set to, two weeks, right? Or no?
Which probably ends on the Friday.
Right. But if we had a week of snow days, and had to change the last day of school-
Right, yes.
That's what, it would impact.
Right. Then there are other discussions to have, whether or not really it's adding it at the end of the school year, or it's figuring out other times during the year. I mean, I'm not saying I support this, but certainly the board has had conversations about taking a day in April vacation, for example.
When was the last time we had a week of snow days?
It's all, it's, it always has worked, and when we're adding the four days, so what will happen now, today, the board and the consent agenda will approve the regional calendar. From there, it goes back to the leadership team and to the staffs about where do we wanna add the four additional days?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And we're always looking at when's that end date as we're doing that, trying to work it out so that we don't end on a Friday knowing very well. You know, we wouldn't end a one-hundred-and-seventy-five, or a hundred-and-seventy, whatever it is, on that Friday, so, because we know we're gonna, we're gonna be adding snow days.
Adding snow days, straight, cut it. Okay. Seven point two, budget debrief.
Take two.
Take two, round two.
We identified five areas that we wanted to look at next year, going into the budget that we can potentially improve upon. They are around community engagement, the community survey, the board goals, budget buddies, and some content questions. So, what I'd like to do is, I'll talk to you a little bit about each one of these categories, and just to get some feedback and ideas from you guys. The community engagement, the participation at the budget forum was not robust. I feel that we've, well, the group feels that we've had better participation in the past when we've done it at different schools, so we were looking at potentially doing that again, and starting each session with either recorded or live broadcast intro by the board, chair, and COO. Jean, did I miss anything? Anybody else from the finance committee wanna, anything else on that?
I mean, I know that the board was really, last year, we were really interested in trying to show us as a single community by having a single budget forum, but-
I think we lost, people just didn't drive here versus being in their own community.
I mean, it was only the second year, so you have two data points, one was really good, and one was okay, but as expected for the previous other years. I don't think we need to break it out quite yet, but that's just my opinion.
And I actually think I, you know, I have that, I hesitate to break it out yet, because part of the consolidated district plan was really, we recognized that some of what we needed to do was kind of train, if you will, the public to get their minds around, we're not just thinking about Williston when we think of this budget, or St. George, we're thinking about the whole district. So that, that was the thinking of having, well, we started going from place to place to place to place as a whole board-
Yeah.
And it really didn't work out, because not very many people came to those things either. And then we started to do that one, one big meeting, and with individual visits to buy specific board members, and not even necessarily from the same community, but to inside the community, buy a board member into different communities. So I just want to offer that.
I think the, the idea of having a single, having Lynn do a single presentation at the beginning wasn't so much because she looked so good on TV, but to try, to try to get that checkmark of, we are a single board, and this is a single mess, mission, but we have for the last two years, at that point, broken out into local schools, classroom, you know, different room, local rooms to have further discussion, so, I don't know, it's a compromise.
But people haven't come for that either, right? I mean, we were the only, I, I was in Williston, and it was school board members.
Right.
And, and I thought, actually, I didn't really think it was an effective use of time, because we asked the teachers and the principals, or the principals to come and present and take their time, and then they're preaching to the choir. So there has to be, I think, a better, I, I'm, I've yet to discover that better way, but I just think that, you know, I, I suspect you didn't have a lot of show to this year's budget, because nothing was in question for people. They liked what they saw last year, they saw the first big merger budget, and that, that's what I suspect.
The second one was the community survey. Participation wasn't too bad, but we need a better plan to, for the board to review the results, and we need to get it completed prior to the October board meeting to influence our goals. Any questions or concerns over-
So that means finance is gonna meet over the summer to develop-
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah.
We're in a year-round budget.
Yes.
Board goals, we want to have the education goals can be tied to the indicators next year. The financial model, target needs to be worked on in regards to expense target relationship to salary contracts, special education's net impact versus spending impact, and then that's gonna be a problem for one more year, and Megan talked about that in the past quite a bit with us. And then we also kind of need to decide as a board, you know, the budgets are getting harder and harder every year, so what is the board process if administration comes to us and says they can't meet what we're asking them to do? So that's, it's something that we can put on an agenda for a later date. Budget buddies are pretty important to us, not only because that they're linked to the community that we're creating a budget that they have to prove, but it's also a recruitment pipeline for the board. So, this past year, the budget buddies didn't work out really well, and past years also, they've, they felt that, you know, maybe the structure wasn't as, as tight as they wanted it to, so we need to look at that again for next year.
One of our budget buddies worked out awesome.
Mm-hmm. And then, option content questions? Going to do a three-year dive deep scheduled for the spring for special ed. IT and administration needs to discuss what a triennial review would look like.
We had it on the early budget setup, was it some of the, we'd have it like, every three years, we'd have a deep dive on certain things, so special ed is up, and given the situation with special ed, Megan's volunteered to get that done in our spring go-around. We also had it on our original- We also had it on our original design of the budget process, that every three years we'd have the IT department come back and talk about educational components of IT and how we use technology. That was when the state, now I need some help here, but when the state had a, had a, had a process in place where it needed to be reviewed with them every three years. Now, that's gone away, so we just have to figure out like what information the board would like to see every, on a regular rotating basis. So, that's just something that we need to, and Mike, Jeff Evans, and I need to work with Bonnie and Mike Cameron.
Personalized learning, what's, are gonna be new and unexpected costs, what's gonna be ongoing for the budget. Administration needs to look at.
This was just a specific one. Sorry, that was pretty specific, a note I took, yeah.
And then the work innovation fund model, it's next year's process, you know, two-year funding. What does that look like going forward? Any questions, concerns over any of the things that we just talked about? Any feedback for us on what, how you thought the process was? Okay, bad, good, that's it?
I think it was.
Hi, Colleen, did you wanna say something?
When I get a chance, I'd love to just contribute.
Go ahead.
I really appreciate the, the budget debrief in the, in the goals for next year. I think that seems very well thought out, and applaud the committee for coming up with those goals. There are just a couple of things I might add to the conversation. I don't know what it looks like, but I'd like for board members to be, all board members to be a little bit more, have an opportunity to engage with the budget process. And perhaps some of that is getting some materials in advance of meetings, more than, you know, like at the day of a meeting, or a week before. And I know that's a huge challenge for the timeline of everything. And so, I don't know what it looks like, but if the committee could just kinda think about how to, are there ways to bring other board members into the conversation so that all 12 board members are fully versed in the budget? The other piece I'd like for some consideration of is how can we look at comparative data a bit more? For example, I'm thinking about the spending at central office per head count and how that compares to other districts, particularly in Chittenden County, and, and so what does that mean? Like, how are we using central office? And maybe that's part of the deep dive conversation. I think that's a really great concept that the committee has come up with, is doing deep dive every three years into different areas. So, I, I don't know what it looks like, but I would like for us to somehow think about how we can use comparative data so that we can help explain to the general public how we do things in comparison to other districts.
Nope, that's fair. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you.
And one, I just wanna go back to your earlier comment. One, the finance committee typically meets not only on our committee Tuesday night, but the Mondays before the board meetings. So, a lot of times...
We're meeting weekly.
Yeah, we're meeting weekly. So, a lot of times, you know, it's, it's tough to ask Jean to, you know, go home and put all the stuff together and get it back to, to the committee, and then have it ready for the Tuesday night. So, I definitely agree that we can look at, you know, how we do things, but the budget is, is one of the things that the board has to remember, is that the budget committee is literally meeting every week. And usually they're Mondays and Tuesdays.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what it means, and you know, perhaps it's the, the timing of when the budget committee meets, and maybe the budget committee, and I'm just making this up, you know, maybe the budget committee meets on a Wednesday, and the following Tuesday is when there's more discussion about whatever the committee met on that prior to Wednesday. So, you know, perhaps it's the timing of when the committee reviews materials prior to the next board meeting. And, and I understand the constraints, and I, I appreciate the challenges of that, but I, I felt removed from, a lot more removed from the process than I was comfortable with, but, you know. But thank you. It's, you know, it's, it's good work that you guys have been doing. I'll go, I'll go back to mute.
Any other input for the budget, for the budget debrief?
So, I have a question too, partly to Colleen's point. So, what is the feeling about a board member who's not on the budget committee coming to a budget committee meeting?
Go for it. Love, we love the conversation.
Just have to be careful. If there are six of you there, that is a quorum, and you would need to warn it in advance. So, it couldn't be that you could just show up, right? We'd need to know.
And with some advance notice, I'm not sure what the notification, which Sandy does, but is it 24 hours, or is it a week, or, you know, there's some period of time for warning that you?
You know, and I don't know if it's necessarily we want to warn every one of our committee meetings.
Well, we do warn all the committee meetings, though. We warn, we warn all the committees, sorry. But, I don't know if that was corrected anyway.
I wonder if, to Colleen's point, of course, is probably a retrained discussion topic, but if the committee is doing that much work and meeting every week, I mean, one, thank you, thank you, it's phenomenal. But if any of that work can be shifted to full board meetings, partially just to even the workload, and also so that we're all a little bit more involved, that obviously raises questions about committee structure and purpose of committee, and you're doing great work. But if it's that much work, is there some way to pull any of it back into more full board meetings so that we're all a little more involved?
What's unique about, and it goes, again, goes back to committee discussion.
Yeah.
Because then we ask a policy committee to come and bring their board work here, you know?
Yeah.
So, everybody can be involved. But the, the finance committee is unique in the sense is that, you know, we do work, and we work, and we work, and we work, and work. And then we work more, and more, and more, and more. And then when the budget's done and it's approved, we take some time off. So, it's not, you know, it's like we took like one week off.
I was gonna say, when, I was gonna say Brendan, when did we have that time off? You promised me like, basically February on.
Exactly.
There's a time where we are meeting that much, but it's not like, at least from my perspective.
We make so much, we forgot to tell you.
It's not like you're just gonna stop. It's, it's just, we'll have to work for a short period.
And the only, the only thing I would say is that the way, like what we're going over and like the detail, the level of detail, I, I think, I think that the size of the committee is now, it's working, but I, I, it's just, I don't imagine it being able to be at a table with, with 13 people, including Jean, talking about it, because there'd be so, like we would just veer off topics so easily. I, I can't, I, I just can't picture how it could be in like a full board meeting, is the, is the only thing. And I don't know if Jean has creative ideas, but I, I feel, I, I felt like it, it makes sense the way that it's, it's working.
Maybe you guys can live, not livestream your meetings, but figure out a way to record your meetings.
Well, there isn't a whole lot of data that the committee sees that doesn't get shown to the full board. It's just that we spend a little more time on the, on it. And then it, what's really valuable to me is getting feedback from a smaller committee who can say, you know, Jean, I understand what you're trying to say, but we just took 20 minutes to get there.
Yeah.
If you said it like this, it could be much. So, so I get a lot of feedback from the committee like that, too. And I did, just the timing, just reminder, we had a pretty screwed up calendar this year with, with, with the placing of Thanksgiving. Was it the wrong week for the calendar, and then the, and then the snow cancellation? So, we really were meeting every week. Hopefully, that won't happen.
No more snow days. It's gonna happen this year. Okay. Thank you. 7.3, the 2019-2020 CVSD school calendar.
It's 9.3, it is that same calendar, right, that you're gonna be approving the regional calendar. And I would just say that the week of November 18th through the 22nd should be in orange. That is, those are school days.
Yep.
That was just a mistake. So, what you're looking at on 9.3, that calendar, are the days that the regional superintendents have said, these are your 175 days, and then we'll add four. Traditionally, the days that we've looked at to add four are November 25, 26, January 1, January 20th, May 25th, February, and March 2 and 3, March 2 and 3. So, that's, you know, from that set is how we're going to, with all of the principals and other administrators around the table, discuss which ones make the most sense.
I don't think you mean January 1st. Do you mean January 20th?
Oh, no, no, right, January 20th, sorry. Not January 1st.
That would be hard.
Yes, no. That's a holiday.
Didn't go into the next week. A lot of Chittenden schools did.
Right.
And I was, I was like, you're already back at school, but it makes sense now that that was where we added a couple of days.
That's where you add days. Now, I will say, right, this is, we need to start thinking about where we hold our voting, and... This is likely to be a heavy election day, right? So, we've already heard from our town clerks. That's something that we need to think about. That they, in some of our communities, the school is the best place, but it's not the best place if kids are there, right? So, even in the one school that we hold voting in now, Charlotte, it's not as clean as what you would hope it to be. People can walk in, and once they walk in, and, you know, like even if you ask them to please stop and use another door, they don't necessarily believe that they have to do that. We're talking about town meeting day. Next year, they're expecting a heavy turnout.
Because it's the primary, it's our primaries.
Town clerks also said they wanted more volunteers to count.
Oh, I've got that on a separate calendar. It's the, it's the Board of Civil Authorities, which includes all of the justices of the peace, but I have that on a separate list to make sure that we sign them up.
And if we just don't have any board meetings that night?
Yeah, lots of all, well, we can't really count.
You have to be a justice of the peace.
Clerk can count votes, too. So, that was fun.
Feed them into the machine.
You could count, you could do the work. That's true.
Can't do it next year.
All right, so this is on the consent agenda.
Well, the, the 175 days is on the consent agenda. What's on the discussion? Because it will be on an action next month. Is, is there any input as we, we start deliberating which one of these days? Is there anything that you go, you know what, I don't understand why we do this, or please don't do that?
I would just say, and I, I don't know that we're actually considering it now, or if it would just be a thought for the future, but I think that families would be very frustrated if they lost some days during that April break.
Right.
Just because I know that, I had mentioned earlier, that I, I already have parents asking me about if the calendar was gonna be out so that they could plan next year's April breaks.
Sandy's gotten...
Like, when will this be?
Home requests already.
So, that's just...
No one's ever gonna...
Towns have been known to not send their kids to school.
Oh, sure. I guess, I guess, yeah, right. They could just...
I mean, Elaine may say that, but...
Yeah, I know. It's not gonna happen.
Very rare, and almost never.
Has it ever happened? Right.
That we would pull days out. I mean, the other thing is like, in order to do that, you'd have to know so early. You'd have to have like some sort of snowmageddon in November and December, where you'd be able to react and do something like that.
Yeah.
And we always get a big storm in April anyway, so, it's coming.
This weekend, more Easter.
I, I, I like having the school closed, if there's gonna be voting in the schools.
I agree.
When you look at that, it's just so many people coming in and out of the schools. It's just, it's disruptive to the kids. The adults would probably prefer the kids not aren't there.
Well, there's two arguments to that. There are some, the towns folks like having the kids there, because the kid, well, in the towns that still hold town meeting, they like have it, they like when the students come in and can see what a real town meeting looks like in Charlotte.
And they could on their day off, too, though.
They could, but usually what happens is...
I know, it's not gonna happen.
I actually, as a parent, when, when Williston School, when they were doing the voting during the last presidential election, it was so heated. I didn't send my child to school. You know, I think that like, there's a, there's a safety side to like having the public in the schools while our children are being educated. And so, when I look at it from that perspective...
Absolute. We agree with you.
And I think if we do have it open, we have to talk about potentially, you know, what are we gonna do to enhance the security? But that's a different conversation.
I mean, just to keep in mind, though, is that alternatives, if you're taking days off the table, you're moving into another week of June, which is, doesn't thrill people either. And right now, you only have one sort of baked-in snow day. So...
But I've got six days to choose from.
Do you have any sense of Thanksgiving week, other, how many other schools, or what the practice is generally statewide of that Monday, Tuesday? Because that's a
Right.
Full week break here, which isn't in...
I think it's a more of a Chittenden County practice. The superintendents that are in this regional group, it's more their practice. So, that includes Franklin County, Grand Isle, and three of the Addisons. But...
Is there a reason?
That said, Addison and Franklin County, they have their own calendars, right? They try to mirror our calendar because they're part of our group, but their kids go to different tech centers, and that's what the law is about.
Is there any reason why we couldn't start school on August 26th instead of the 28th?
There's no law about it.
I'm, and I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking if we wanted, say we wanted to be closed on March 2nd and 3rd for town meeting day.
It can be part, I just circled it as, it can be part of the discussion, for sure.
Would that require a tax to come back?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Then you're getting into...
That's, that's the...
And that would impact new, that would impact new teacher orientation, too, which also happens that week before.
That's the challenging part of the start.
What are the two other logical days? I mean, I see the March 2nd and 3rd are things that we've done in the past, where those are two of the days. Where are the, where would we take, where did we take the other two this year?
Well, so the calendar probably ended differently this year, so that we had maybe the 11th and 12th instead of...
We didn't have the whole week of Thanksgiving off, did we?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did not have it for 15 years at least.
Do you remember not making lunches for those five days?
And we bring snack one time every, like...
Ray, did you wanna say something?
How many winter mist days do we have a gap in the year?
One. And that doesn't impact this. That's additional to this.
Right, I understand.
Right. So, we have two at the front end, and one at the back end.
Any other input? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just quick, am I not seeing the early release days?
Well, they're just, they're every...
They're still every, oh, okay. So, that's, we're still having that.
This is just regional calendar. Do kids go to school on December 23rd?
Oh, okay, yeah.
That would be a day.
Thank you.
I mean, that...
People would leave.
They wouldn't come.
Right.
But, I mean, we can circle it. We can certainly circle it. Okay.
I'm, I'm reaching it. I'm just pouring straws.
7.4, do you guys have the code of ethics in your, in your packets? The VSBA code of ethics?
I didn't see it.
So, this is something that the VS...
For 7.4.
I don't have it on my...
She says it was in the orientation binder, but not in here.
Okay. You know what we could do? Let's move that. We'll, we'll move that, we'll put it at the retreat, actually, because we haven't talked about it for a long time.
Okay.
We just, every year, say, read the code of ethics, but we could move that to the retreat.
And then make sure that we have it on the work plan so that it does end up in the agenda.
Okay. 7.6, legislative breakfast. So, Erin and Barbara and I have been in contact with Kate Webb about the breakfast, which is Monday morning at 7:30, and we asked her about potential agenda items, and this was last week, and she said, this is gonna be a busy week. Get back to me next week. So, we're here this week. Did everyone get the VSBA legislative update, the bills that crossed over and those that didn't? If there are any on there that you guys feel passionately about, like, you know, school construction aid, you might wanna give some input or feedback, just let Erin, Barbara, myself know. How many people think they're gonna be there on, on Monday?
I'll be there.
Okay, so a fair group.
I'm really interested to understand about the... I'm really interested to understand about the, the lead in the radar bills, because I've heard two different stories, and then the V S B A update had no numbers in it, numbers in it, really, because there's the, the three, the fifteen, the twenty parts per billion. So I'd love her to talk about that.
Okay.
Sounds gripping. Yeah.
Well, we could follow that up with construction aid, it would make perfect sense. Any other issues that y'all? Okay, I will try and connect with Kate this week and see if there are things that they're looking for. I know she has met with Elaine and, and Megan.
Megan, Jeff?
And Jeff, okay. Seven point seven, Committees. So it occurred to me, we have yet to kind of figure out the lifespan of committees. And last year, when we had three new board members, I think what we did was everybody stayed on their same committee through the end of the year. And we asked the new board members to just go for the remaining three months to the committees, just to get a sense of which ones they might be interested in going on. This is gonna be an agenda, a retreat item as well. But I guess I just wanted to get a head nod, yes, that people are okay with that plan to be on the same committees until we get.
Yeah, I mean, unless you absolutely hate your committee and want to change, it'd be great to have them.
Any committee.
Dave and I are on two of them together, so we're loving this.
No, I mean, everybody has, you know, everybody has an opportunity to change.
Right.
But if you, you know, if you're happy, I think you should, you should stay for some continuity, I think it'd be great.
I'm just asking everybody to stay until at least the retreat. Like, I don't want to reorganize committees right now, I don't think that makes much sense.
Well, I think if you didn't bring it up, no one would.
No one would even have asked.
I'm trying to be transparent.
You just quietly could've said.
Inertia's a wonderful thing.
Next.
Sorry, made you laugh. Didn't mean to do that.
These water bottles look like beer bottles.
Can I ask when I might select, how I might find myself on a committee and when that would happen?
I can talk to you about that.
Okay.
We'll talk. Okay. That ends Discussion Matters.
But committees are great, don't get me wrong.
Yeah.
That's where all the work gets done.
A lot of work that's done, honestly. Kudos to all of you for the amount of work that you're getting done in these committees. It really, it is impressive.
These meetings would be very long if we didn't have.
And it wouldn't be the same. I mean, how could you possibly think about each committee, three committees, all doing really good work, and then multiply that times three and add it to your agendas?
It would be a lot of work.
It wouldn't be as effective, I don't think, so, I mean, kudos to you guys.
Eight point O, Action Matters. Eight point one. Do I have a motion to approve the Continuous Improvement Plan?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Jeff, do you want to say anything about?
Just, just that, you know, we've spent quite a bit of time with the Indicators Committee, breaking it down, presented it to you last time. What you're really approving are the goals that we shared last time, and I will continue to put it in front of Indicators Committee and then the larger board as we continuously improve and revise the plan.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Eight point two, Black Lives Matter Flag. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Well, we need a motion.
We need a motion.
We need a specific motion.
So I'd like to put forth a motion in absence of a policy and recognition, in recognition that it's a mission to develop citizens who live responsibly and respectfully, to make a motion to fly the Vermont State Flag on a flagpole with the U.S. flag, and fly the Black Lives Matter flag for thirty days on the second flagpole at CBU with the red-white day indicator flag below it. The thirty days is to begin within ten days of approving this motion, commencing on a day directed by the principal. The flag shall be flown as guided by the flag code, as detailed but not limited to U.S. Code Title Thirty-Six, Chapter Ten, Subsection One Seventy-Five. Once a CBSD flag policy is developed and approved, all groups requesting the flying of a flag will be subject to the new policy.
Do I have a? Motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion?
I have, I have no objection to the Black Lives Matter flag flying or any other social interest group flag flying, as long as it's an appropriate interest group approved by administration and the principal. Over the last few weeks, I've received an amazing amount of feedback from community members, all the students, and a lot of people who just don't live in our community that read things or heard about things. And I'm concerned that by doing this and not having a policy to back up our decisions and why we're doing it, we're kind of putting the, the horse in front of the cart and this could potentially open us up for problems. So my concern, again, is not with the flag. It's that we're, we're authorizing the flag of a social interest group to be flown prior to the development of the policy.
Other thoughts? Russ?
So a couple of weeks ago, when we left our last meeting and discussed this, I was pretty much on the same page as, as where Dave is, who, who I think created this, this motion. And since then, I've changed my mind, largely as a result of a couple of conversations that I had with a couple of good college friends of mine who are both attorneys. One of them, who I spoke with last week, spent most of his career in real estate development, but he reminded me of a little thing called the First Amendment. So as I was thinking about it additionally over the weekend, I thought, you know what, you idiot, you have a friend who is the legal director of the statewide ACLU in what I would describe as one of our ten most populous states in this country. And what he talked to me about was the concept of forum. So there's three kinds of forums as it relates to government speech, which is what this is, flying, flying on school grounds. You have non-public forums, so that's not really relevant here. You have a designated or limited public forum, sounds like we have this right now in our cafeteria, where there's a designated space and that school clubs can display information, display banners, that sort of thing. And because it's a designated or a limited public forum, we can limit that to school groups. The third is a traditional public forum, and that's the flagpoles out front there. And so what my friend told me is that we really have to have content neutrality. And Dave said, I'm sorry, Brendan said something about appropriate and approved. There's no such thing as appropriate and approved here. That we can't limit the groups, the student groups that can form. There's something called the Equal Access Act, and my friend sent me an email that he sent today to a school district in his state that was trying to limit, or basically was standing in the way of a black student union school club being formed. And this Equal Access Act says that you can't do that. So pretty much any group, or any group of students that wants to form a club in this, in this school can do so. And then once that's, a group has been formed, we can't say, if, if we've established a history of what he referred to as third-party group flag flying, we can't pick and choose which ones are acceptable to us and which ones aren't. So, you know, before we get too far down this path and approve this, I think that it's critical that we have a policy and that we've had somebody with a background in constitutional law review what we're going to do with this. Because if we fly a flag out there, then we have established that, that history of third-party group flag flying. And at that point, our ability to, you know, say yes or no is gone. So, you know, for that reason, I, I'll be voting against this motion. And I think that it would be, you know, frankly irresponsible for us to move forward when you look at, you know, the possibilities. And in a conversation with, with Dave earlier, you know, said, well, you know, I, I don't think that, you know, we would have a student group who would form and then want to fly some flag. But actually, with a traditional public forum out front, my understanding is they don't even have to be a school group. That, that it could be any third party that arguably could fly a flag out there. So I, I certainly understand the passion and the urgency that people feel on this, but I still feel that it's wrong for us to move forward until we've explored some of these issues further. Unless we're, we're willing to just, you know, kind of take it as it comes, and, and I don't think that's where we want to be.
Russ, did your friend, he wasn't against the flying of the flag in the presence of policy. He was saying, without policy, you shouldn't fly it, or was he of the opinion, regardless of if you have a policy, you can't limit?
Well, you, you, you can't have a policy that says, we'll only allow approved groups or approved messages to be on a flag out there. You know, that, that, that's where freedom of speech comes in. You may not like somebody's message, but you can't, you know, you can't limit their, their right to say it.
Well, that's, that's an interesting point, and I, I see your point. But in documents that we've been presented with that are in public institutions at University of Vermont, at University of Massachusetts at Dartmouth, and I think at Essex Westwood, there is an opportunity to fly flags, and there's a decision process in all of those.
And, and, and it has, it hasn't been challenged in court yet, it would be, would be my assumption. And, and if that's a path that, that we're prepared to go down, then, then I guess that's, that's one matter. But if we want to be deliberate about this and try to avoid something like that, that would become very expensive, you know, I, I, I think we need to give that some further thought.
I guess my question is around the policy aspect of what's being discussed in the sense of, if, if we should move to postpone until a policy's in place, on the one hand. On the second hand, I'm hearing that once, we have no right as a board to limit a group from forming for public speech, which is then covered by the amendment to free speech.
Yep.
Given the fact that the flagpole is a public forum.
I, I don't think it is, I.
Well, I'm just going from what Russ has said, so I'm wondering then, given those, that set of criteria, on what grounds do we form a policy?
Well, I, I think you could form a policy that says.
Red ground flags or blue flags or.
I, I think you could have, you could have a policy that says, you know, and any group can fly, you know, one month in any twelve-month period or, or something to that effect.
But it still doesn't limit the, the flag that's, so I guess.
It, it doesn't limit the message.
My, my question, though, is if, with that, with that understanding, what prevents RAC from going out right now and, and flying the flag?
So what I understand.
Because we don't have a history of third-party flag flying.
But if it's, but if it's public, if it's a public forum.
So I'm only going by what I watched on RETN, the Burlington School Board meeting, when their attorney, Joe McNeil, on February thirteenth, twenty eighteen, talked about flagpoles. And he taught, he said specifically that the flagpole is not a place for public debate. It is government speech, and it is under the control of the administration and the board. But I don't, I mean, that's just what I watched, and, you know, I could have been sleeping when I watched it. But that is my understanding, is that it's under our control.
Which, which is exactly what I've been wondering about. For example, if someone wanted to place a flag with a swastika on it, we would, we would not allow that, we would censor that. I'm wondering what our authority is to be able to determine what is safe and reasonable for the students in our school. And it doesn't seem to me that free speech allows an open field to be able to display any message that one wants to display. We already have a history and a precedent, it seems to me, of censoring actions and activity that are deemed to be unsafe to the, to the, to the community, to the school community. It feels to me that there is some precedent in place for this, that we have the, the authority to be able to do that. And so that's the question that I have.
Safety is one thing, you know, you're, you're not supposed to yell fire in a crowded theater if, if there's not, you know, that, that's not covered by free speech. Honestly, I think aid speech is.
Not in our policy. Acts of anti-bias.
I, I'm, I'm, I'm talking about, you know, the First Amendment, not what's, not what's in our policy. And, and, you know, look, I, I had a conversation with him on the phone for fifteen, twenty minutes on Sunday and had an email exchange with, with him today, and he shared some more thoughts and, and some, you know, a letter that, that, like I say, he had just sent to the school district today for, for a similar issue. So I, I'm not pretending to be an expert, and it's been a long time since I took any courses on the Constitution. All I'm saying is that if we take action tonight that says, run the flagpole up there, we may lose control of, of this issue in a way that we, we may then never get back. So, you know, I, again, I understand the urgency and, and the passion and the desire to do something. But I, I, I think that, you know, we don't want to get too far out over our skis on this one. And just because some other district or some other, you know, public institutions have done things, doesn't mean that we should, and, and doesn't mean that we shouldn't get our own opinion on this from, you know, whoever we might hire to, to render that opinion, or, or maybe to ask the Vermont ACLU, who, who would have more experience in Vermont courts and the federal courts in Vermont. So, you know, like I say, I, I was, I was the same place that Dave was a couple of weeks ago, but these conversations have made me concerned enough about it that I think we need to go just a little bit slower on it.
So you want a policy in place prior to the, the flying of the flag?
Absolutely.
Okay.
And, and, and that policy has to be informed by, you know, somebody who's got a lot more experience with this sort of thing than I do, that, that says, you know, yes, what you're doing would pass muster, or, or, you know, has a good chance of passing muster, or you're gonna get creamed.
I'm gonna go to Erin, only because you've spoken one time.
I just want to publicly state my support for it. I think that we've had a, a process here and a lot of participation, and we haven't had attorneys in our district coming to bring forth concerns, at least not to the full board that I'm aware of. I would, certainly would hear those concerns if we had. I appreciate the volume of student participation on all sides in this process. And I would not support the cost it might be for further legal questioning of this process, considering we're talking about equity and the need so many places that we could be using resources to increase equity. I would, I would be disappointed to see our process take us down a route of incurring legal expenses before we proceed, rather than spending that money elsewhere towards equity for all students in our district.
It's not allowed to.
It's not allowed to do it, but it's fun to do it.
Even, so one of the things that we're talking about here is, is the obvious, you know, the legal piece, you know, what do we do, what do we not do? But one of the goals in the board is to be equitable. There's three months left in the school, roughly three months left at school for the year. And what happened if, if ten other group, social groups say, I want my flag flown this year? So it's, I, I, in the absence of a policy, I don't think we could be equitable to all the social groups within the school.
I, I guess I just want to challenge how we describe equity in that sense. I don't, equity is not equality. And so I don't think that our goal here is equality and that everybody has the same amount of time on a flagpole. Equity means sometimes, some groups, some organizations, some individuals, in order to achieve equality, have other opportunities. So I don't, I don't think that we need to worry about equitable time on the flagpole for X number of organizations in the name of our goals towards equity as, as a board.
I think raising the Black Lives Matter flag goes to the core of what we've, of information we've received from several students and several faculty, which is that by supporting Black Lives Matter, you're not saying that you don't support all lives. What you're saying is, I recognize that, that things have not been equitable for you, that you have experienced hardships that I have never experienced, and that we see you, we, we feel you, and we support you. So I don't think, I, just going to Erin's point, I don't believe that we have to be, we have to be concerned about other student groups being able to have their flag flown in the next three months. And going back to the Action Matter. And going back to the action matter, I wonder if there's more discussion to be had also about it being limited to 30 days, because the original RAC proposal was for it to be raised till the end of the school year. And I would personally support that. I think that we should be doing it for more than 30 days. I think it makes sense. There's, I can't advocate for it as well as the students have, but I do, I would propose that we would raise the flag and that we would do it through the remainder of the year.
So if I could address something that Erin said, if your concern is about spending two grand, five grand, you know, some number to have, you know, legal counsel review this, that will be nothing compared to getting sued and having to defend ourselves in litigation. So I would rather spend, you know, some number rather than, and whether we approve this or not tonight, I still think that that would be money well spent compared to the costs of litigation and, you know, not being able to defend that. So, you know, one way or the other, that is a step that I strongly feel we need to be taking.
Ray?
I've spent hours and hours and hours just debating this issue with myself, and I'm still torn about the thing. My concerns are that flying the Black Lives Flag, well, I want to say that, you know, everybody should be valued, and specifically in this case, I want to know that non-white students are also wanted and valued and want them to feel safe here. But I fear that flying the Black Lives Flag is going to have the opposite effect of what its proponents wanted to do, that it is exclusionary and not inclusionary, that it is going to alienate those who are most needed to be brought into the fold, who most need to be part of the discussion. We're already facing, you know, you hear about tribalism and such, and I fear it's going to divide the tribes apart further. And it's just going to have the entirely wrong effect. My second issue with it is that it's going to miss a larger issue of bullying and other harassment on the LBGQ community, I get all the letters in there, community on white-on-white bullying, sexual harassment, and I just...
Where are you getting your information on this?
I'm sorry.
Well, that's my other question.
I'm sorry, this is a board discussion, please. I'm sorry, thank you. Go ahead, Ray.
And my other thing is, is there any data? I mean, has anybody ever, I mean, you know, I guess the other fact is, fear is that we're going to fly this flag and pat ourselves on the back and go home and think what wonderful people we are, and that's going to be the end of it. That it's going to leave aside the hard work that needs to be done on it. So I guess, I find myself very, very torn on this issue, and I'm really afraid that it's going to have the opposite effect of, excuse me, it's going to have the opposite effect of what we're hoping for.
So your issue is with raising the flag in general, regardless of whether there's a policy or not?
Well, I often also wonder if we're just opening a box of snakes, too, by doing it. But I just fear, you know, I mean, that we're going to have, yeah, it's just going to have the wrong effect. It's going to have the opposite effect of what we think it's going to have.
Is there anyone who hasn't spoken, who, Barbara, sorry?
So I personally, I also have been torn going back and forth. My husband happens to be an attorney, and I was just talking to him about it, you know, what are his thoughts about this? And he said, you know, by raising the flag, one of the things that you might be thinking about is you're recognizing these number of people who have never felt recognized.
I'm sorry, never felt what?
Recognized.
Recognized. And I know we've talked about the American flag standing up for everybody, but if you go back to the civil, you know, civil rights, you realize some of these people have been oppressed. So even up to now, I'm still back and forth, but it's not that we're saying this flag is going for 30 days. We all realize it needs a policy. I guess maybe my question is to the policy committee, what will it take to get this policy done? And maybe an initial one, meaning we are putting it for 30 days. There is a possibility of other clubs that might want to raise their flag, and how do we go about that so that we have something initial to start working on? It's not going to come out right away in a month. I think such a policy needs a lot of review and work. But I think, you know, it's something, I'm going to say I go for it for 30 days, and we have to work on the policy.
It's, has it...
Well, I was going to just, you know, you asked what would it take from the policy committee, which I'm on. You know, typically, we meet, we have a lot of discussion. Sometimes we end up, you know, doing some research and trying to understand, you know, are there other policies like it around the state that we might, you know, look at? So, you know, we might discuss something in the policy committee several times before then actually bringing it to the full board, and then it becomes a discussion matter. We're supposed to review it here, and then, you know, it may or may not go back to the policy committee for further work, depending on the discussion that we have at the board level. And then, you know, we, you know, at some point, we discuss it to death, and then it becomes an action item. And then it gets voted on by the full board and becomes a policy. You know, could that timing be compressed? Perhaps, in this case where this is, you know, an important issue and where, again, there's a lot of attention to it and a lot of urgency, sure. But I don't think we could sit here and say, you know, to, you know, develop a policy and to fully vet it. And if we decide that we want to get, you know, a legal opinion as to the First Amendment issues and whatnot, I don't know how long it's going to take. I certainly wouldn't want to, you know, and maybe, you know, some of the other members of the policy committee, you know, want to say, but I don't think we want to commit to, yes, we could have this done in 30 days, not if we expect it to, you know, be a policy that is going to stand up and, you know, last, as opposed to just slapping something together because we need to get a policy in 30 days.
Colleen?
Yes, thank you, Lynn. Do I have an opportunity to say something?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I really appreciate the conversation, and I have a few thoughts about this. One regarding, just following up on Russ's description of what we can do with policy. I think that there's the possibility to fast-track the policy because we can draw on the work of policies such as that developed at the University of Vermont. And I think that is an excellent model. As far as what happens, I like the idea of a 30-day fly time for the flag, following U.S. code for flying flags. And then if there's another group on campus that wants to fly another flag for another 30 days, there is that opportunity. Let's just say that the policy committee has not finished the work, and it hasn't gone through the full vetting process of warning and then the board voting on it, but we could take this through to the end of the year, 30 days for Black Lives Matter flag, 30 days for another flag, if that's what student groups want to do, and leave it up to administrators to come up with protocol for who flies next. As far as repercussions of taking a stand and flying the Black Lives Matter flag, I am in favor of putting our word behind, these are important issues to us. To me, this is an educational issue for our community, and I'm going to vote in favor of the motion that Dave described. I'm not sure who made the motion, but Dave's early presentation on the motion, I'm going to vote in favor of that. I think this is an important issue, and as a board, we have the authority to make this happen.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I just want to get back to Jocelyn's point. I think the reason why we, you know, I would love to fly the flag for the rest of the year, but I think it's sort of a compromise in light of, we understand that a policy needs to be made, so that's why...
My question is, my question is, are we saying 30 days for right now, and that's what we just assume is what is going to be the policy moving forward? Or are we just saying 30 days right now because we need to come up with a policy?
So we're saying 30 days right now as a, I think it's sort of a compromise to recognize an important cause that needs to be recognized, and an issue that needs to be recognized, while also, like, making sure we take some time to really think out next steps and have a policy that can apply to the poll without having to engage the entire board every time we do it. So it's just a way to get started.
Yeah, I think, you know, as a mother, you want to, you want to, I would hate to say fly for the next, you know, whatever, two and a half months, excuse me, and then have a policy, say, 30 days. And then you're stuck with, well, why did they get to fly it, and we don't get to fly it? I kind of feel like I can't imagine it being shorter than 30 days coming up with the policy, but I kind of feel like, you know, it is a good compromise. Has anyone talked? Oh, Angela.
I hesitate to talk because this is my first meeting.
Oh, don't hesitate. You have a big opinion.
But it just occurred to me, is there a reason that we couldn't consider basically almost the language of this motion, a short-term policy? I don't know if that would assuage any fears or actually work in a legal way, but to say, like, this 30-day window is the policy for now, and then write the long-term policy in that 30 days?
I'm going to defer to our HR legal person.
The way policies, policies have to be printed up in the newspaper and warned in advance, so we couldn't do it exactly like that. Although that thought process is the right way to be thinking.
There's also other components of the policy that aren't in this motion, which are...
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
You know, timing, and, you know, authority, and like what the decision process would be.
I just didn't, I was trying to think of a way to address this very specific request in what could be considered a policy. Basically, being able to fly the flag in a way that those who don't want to fly the, want to fly the flag but don't want to do it without a policy, might be more comfortable with it. But being able to do it now instead of however long it might take to write the official long-term policy, yeah, it's a stopgap thought.
So if I'm hearing Mark, I mean, we could do that. We could warn this as a discussion, and then action at the next meeting, approve this as a policy, and then approve the flying of the flag?
I don't...
I think the board might want to consider, I think, more in line with what Angela's talking about, is when sometimes we say, oh, it's a small P policy.
Yeah.
It's more like, this is how we're going to behave, and we all agree in absence of the policy. And then we have a deliberation about, do we need that capital P policy, which in this case, I think everybody agrees, yes, we do, right? And sometimes we just go along, and we just go with the small P policy that guides our words.
Well, honestly, has everyone talked now?
Can I just, I just want to add, like, a personal note that I'm hearing. I just want to state for the record that in the eight years that I've sat on this board, no other group has come before us to fly a flag, period, none. And I think that this is more than a flag. A flag is representative of more than just a movement or an issue. It's a people. So we're talking about people, and we're talking about black people in our community that are asking something of us for the first time they're here. No other group, in my opinion, will come before this board this year and have time on the flag, because these poor folks have been here three or four times. So to get here three or four times, we will automatically be into next year's session. Not to mention, they've started this research well over a year ago and have presented us with an amazing amount of research on what's happening on a national level with this issue. I firmly believe that we are in a position to set an example for not only our internal community at the school system, but the external community. It's a difficult discussion. It is an uncomfortable discussion. It will bring conflict, but not as bad as the conflict that some of our folks have already suffered in our hallways. So I will...
Thank you, Kelly. So I, and I don't, is it okay to mention someone who has sent something to the board? Is it okay to do that? So we, and many of you may be in this room, or maybe you're not, but we've received, it has to be dozens, of emails of people testifying on one side or the other and letting us know how they feel. And just going back to some comments that were made earlier, raising the Black Lives Matter flag is not going to make a group of people feel like that they're different or that they need to, that, it's not going to make, it's not going to make a group of people be ultra-aware that they stand out, because they already feel that way. And Kristel Tanoki, I might be saying your last name wrong if you're here, and I apologize. But just to paraphrase a couple of things that she said in a letter, is that Black Lives Matter is a call for help. If you're still confused, imagine this: I go into the hospital and change all of the intensive care unit signs to care unit signs because every life in this hospital should be cared for just the same. What makes intensive care unit patients think that their lives matter more than the life of Ginny on the first floor fighting a cold? Colds can kill you, too. If you're still confused, here, think to yourself, would you go to a cancer research fundraiser yelling, "There's other diseases, too"? Would you go to someone's funeral and say, "Well, I have felt lost, too"? Would you, if you saw a burning house, go up to it and water down the house next to it because all houses matter? Right? I mean, don't get me wrong, I do believe that the fire is very pressing, but all houses matter. Those in the Black Lives Matter movement say black people are in immediate danger and need immediate attention, like the broken bone or house on fire. So I just want to make sure that everyone on the board is aware, that by raising the Black Lives Matter, we are not saying you are different and now everyone's going to be aware you're different. What we're saying is, we see you, we're supporting you, and we want to make you feel safe, and that this is clearly the first step in changes that we need to make as a district in our schools so that real change can actually happen. So I just, I just felt like that needed to be said.
Thank you. I told Brendan he could go next, and then Ray.
Mark, I think we've heard from a lot of people, and I don't think you've weighed in on this from, you know, a legal services perspective. What's your comfort level? What are you thinking?
So I will point out that I am not the attorney for the board.
Absolutely, and we understand that.
I have shared some thoughts with Lynn as they've come across this week. I am not an ACLU attorney. This is, I do believe it's government speech. I believe you have some ability to direct what goes there. I did, I did have a question on the last sentence in the proposal that's here, in what that actually means, as in, are you proposing a delay in anything else going on the flag pole until a policy is in place? I don't think, it's not exactly clear, and it should be clear, if that's what you want.
I read that as, as whatever gets approved or not approved, or whatever happens tonight is a standalone. So just because something happens tonight isn't a precedent for future policies, is how I read that.
I would concur with that. It's an attempt to not make it a precedent whether or not that actually stood up in court is a different conversation.
So I, I'm as comfortable as you can be in this situation. It's not, it's not unique. We've had other schools who've done this. Yeah, but there's always a chance. My former profession is full of people who would love to take this on on some level or another. So I'm... So, I'm not telling you it's riskless because it's not, but I think you at least have a defensible action.
The, the only school that had, oh, sorry, Ray, I told you you could talk.
Okay. Is it appropriate for me to ask a member of the audience who is far wiser than I am?
No, no, right now, we're talking as a board, sorry. Jeff?
So, I just wanted to mention a couple of points and adding some, to a couple of the strong points that have already been made. I'm understanding that you've collected 800 signatures from the school community. So, what that says to, I think, all of us is that there's very strong support in this school. And I view that as anything but divisive. I think that this only becomes divisive if as, as a community, as a CVU community, you decide you're going to move in a divisive way. I really feel that, that raising this flag is the beginning of hopefully an endless road of conversation and discussion and the willingness to engage in very, very difficult conversations. And, and the amount of work that you all have done is incredibly impressive. And I just think that 800 signatures says, says a lot. And I, I too want to just read a portion of a letter that was received because I'm so struck by this. And as Jocelyn has already said, it's difficult because we've received so many articulate letters and I hope it's all right if I read this from, and I know I'm going to mispronounce this person's name, Benny Yodis Shebo. I greatly apologize for, for mispronouncing your name. But I just want to read this. I think that it captures so much of what you all have said and what we are struggling with because what, what this student says is that, "I can hardly put into words how much the Black Lives Matter flag stands for and means to me and so many other people of color. I don't know much, but I do know what the flag being raised will mean to me, my friends, family, and members of the community. It shows that my community acknowledges the struggles of people of color and they stand united with us for change. It shows me that I have people behind me willing to support me. It shows me that I'm cared for and valued along with other black boys and girls that have also felt unappreciated and underrepresented. It has been proposed that the flag is attached to politics. This is not and has never been a political issue. Raising the flag gives an opportunity and a chance for educating, appreciating, and including. These are qualities that you can never have too much of. I believe even with the tension that can surround race discussion, raising the Black Lives Matter flag is furthering CVU, the community, and eventually the state of Vermont to open their hearts and mind to differences." I could never begin to articulate as well as this, this person has what this flag means to this student and I think to so many of you. And I just appreciate the fact that you've brought this opportunity to the board because we need to be having these discussions. They're overdue, they're long overdue. And I, I appreciate all the work that you all have done with this.
I was just going to add two things to Mark's point about other schools. My understanding in reading minutes and watching videos is that Essex was the only school district that had a procedure in place. They didn't even have a policy, a procedure in place before they approved the flag. U-32 does have a flag policy that was adopted, I think, about five months after they chose to fly the flag. And the other piece I will just say about the policy committee, you might want to, the students, you might want to watch Brattleboro's, our ETN meeting on November 5th. They chose to have a student voice flag poll. That's what they name it. UVM calls it a special events. But actually, the people who are developing the policy are the students and the administration. And what, what it has done, my understanding, is that it has brought up these issues of ACLU First Amendment rights. When one thing is allowed, do we have to allow all the others? It's, it's grown, my understanding, the learning experience of the students. It will still come back to the board for approval and I'm sure there, there's some board involvement. But I just found it interesting that it was called the Student Voice Flag Poll and that, you know, they were dealing with the ramifications of developing a policy. Because that's kind of the adulting part of this, right? The boring part is coming up with the policy to make it, make it all work. All right, do we have any other input, thoughts? Mark?
Either in a separate action or as part of this action, you may consider charging the, officially charging the policy committee to come up with this policy.
And I have, I have something else too.
Okay, go, go ahead, Colleen.
I have three items. One is, I think I'd heard Mark say, a specific charge to the policy committee. That would be one of the items. The second item I would add is a specific charge to administration to begin coming up with protocol that would be in place prior to the start of the next academic year. The third item I would bring forward is a charge to the Budget Finance Committee to look into acquisition of a third flag poll and looking at perhaps moving three flag polls to a different location that's more visible to the community. And look into the cost of that. So, that would be my third item.
Okay. Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Yeah.
This has been an absolutely wonderful conversation. And again, as I stated earlier, I'm in support of raising the Black Lives Matter flag. I'm nervous with a lack of policy. If we were able to clarify, because I agree with you, this last sentence here, I could think can be interpreted to state something as, once a CVSD flag policy is developed and approved, all groups, blah, 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 but a comment in there saying that no other flags will be flown until a policy is approved or a request considered.
I thought that's where we got in trouble with the, with the ACLU. Is that we can't, we can't say that.
Yeah, I don't have a good-
It's not with the ACLU, it's with, it's with-
The founding fathers?
What, what my, my friend described to me is the constitutional law around this issue. You know, so I, I don't know who officially made this motion, but they could accept a friendly amendment that would somehow clarify this last line if we can agree on that. And also that would charge the policy committee with, you know, prioritizing a policy. Again, I, I would be really hesitant to, you know, establish a firm date that says, you know, by doesn't such a date, but that would, you know, charge the committee with moving forward with all haste, you know, on this issue. So, I don't know who officially, Sandy, do we know who officially made the, the motion?
Yeah, it was Dave.
Well, but somebody else actually said, you know-
What's that?
I think I seconded it.
Do you want to, do you want to change the last sentence to say, "No further flag"?
How about, "No further requests will be considered until policy is developed"?
Or, "Consideration, consideration of further requests will be delayed until policy is put in place."
Yeah, there were delay.
In addition to the last line, "Consideration of further policy."
Do we need to have an amendment?
Friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Lynn, I have a question.
Yep.
Does administration think that they could come up with protocol within 30 days for flying another, or, you know, allowing for another group to present prior to the end of the school year and then just take it through the end of the school year?
I don't think that the administration can come up with a protocol until we have a policy that procedures can be developed to work within that policy.
Okay, good point.
I think that's the, the sequence of how this should work.
I agree, that's what I was going to say.
Okay. And then we need to add charging the policy committee.
So, Mark, what was the language that you said again? "Consideration of further flags will be delayed until-"
You expect me to remember 10 minutes ago? Yeah.
I know, it's difficult.
Requests will be delayed.
Further requests will be delayed. "Consideration of further requests will be delayed until policy is approved by the board."
A CVSD. Okay, so is this what I'm hearing? "Consideration of further requests will be delayed until a CVSD flag policy is developed and approved, period. All groups requesting the flying of a flag will be subject to the new policy."
So, you could just pop in, "Developed and approved as charged to the-"
Policy committee.
Committee.
And Lynn, I also, I want to second Jocelyn's to the end of the school year proposal.
That would be an amendment.
Okay. Well, amendment, I would like to, I just would, okay, an amendment.
You'd like to amend this to say, until the end of the school year?
Yes, I support, I support Jocelyn's suggestion of that.
So, are you making that motion?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The person who makes an amendment has to either, you know, the person who made the motion has to either accept or, or deny, you know, a friendly amendment. So, you know, I guess Dave, if he's the official motion maker and this, you know, I think-
Oh, so we put it to Dave?
Yes.
To suggest a friendly amendment.
That's, that's my understanding of how, you know, amending motions is supposed to work.
So, Dave, the, the only reason, like, not the only reason, but the, the fact that RAC had requested for it to be till the end of the school year. But what I'm, excuse me, what I'm hearing is that we're probably not going to have a policy put in place until after the school year ends anyways. So-
Tough to say.
So, I mean, I, even if, even if we end up having a policy that says two weeks or, or 30 days or 45 days or whatever it could possibly be, it probably won't happen before the end of the school year is what I would imagine. So, I, I don't see the harm in, especially even if we go back to 30 days or something else, with this being the first year that we're being able to raise the Black Lives Matter, I don't think that it's, I don't think it's, would be extraordinary to, to have it be a different time period. I'm, I just, I still, I just feel like the students really, as Kelly was saying, she just knows that they're the, the first group that have come in her eight years. They've put in so much time and effort and I, I think it would be a beautiful gesture and a beautiful sign of support if we could support their request in, in the way that they had.
Hold on just a second. So, are you making a friendly amendment? Asking Dave to make a friendly-
I have no idea what that means, but yes, I think that is what I'm doing. I think I'm asking Dave to make a friendly amendment to change it to the end of the school year.
I think you should do the first one with the wording. Get that, accept it as a friendly amendment? And then take this as a second one?
This is Colleen. By Robert's rules, anyone can make an amendment and then the board votes on the amendment.
And then you go back to the original?
Yep.
Motion, whatever that motion ends up being.
Yeah, I'm just saying it should be two actions, that's all.
All right. So, if I remember Town Meeting Day correctly, we do, we, we talk about the second amendment. There's been a request to amend it. We vote on that amendment and then we go back to the original one. Seems kind of backwards because if you approve the amendment, it kind of makes the original one move, but, all right, so you're going to make the amendment?
Yes.
What's your amendment?
That we change the wording to be, I make, I make a motion to fly the Vermont State flag on the flag poll with the US flag and fly the Black Lives Matter flag for, it would be for the remainder of the 2018, 2019 school year on the second flag poll at CVU with the red, white indicator flag below it. And then I would say, the, instead of the 30 days, it would say, this time period, or I, I don't know what the wording would be, is to begin within 10 days of approving this motion.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion.
I think it's going to be very hard if we say, you can go for three months now and then next year, if the policy committee just determines 30 days, it's kind of like taking something away, kind of, from the student's perspective that's not sitting here listening to this conversation. You know, they might ask, well, last year they got to fly for three months and now it's 30 days, so maybe it's less important this year. I don't, I don't, I don't know. It just, I feel it's hard to take for any group. You know, even for me as an employee, it's hard to give me something and then take it away the following year.
I would say we can, you know, if, if we approve it at 30 days and, and if we don't have a policy in 30 days, we can extend it. But, you know, I'm just, I'm uncomfortable doing any of this without a policy and I don't see the harm in, in saying 30 days and, and, you know, if we want to revisit it, then we can.
Yeah, I think, I think as I said previously, I would love to fly this for the rest of the year, but I think it's a good compromise while we try to figure out some of the stronger issues, which I do acknowledge are there with respect to constitutionality and free speech. I hate having to say that it's a compromise, but I think it's a, it's a reasonable start to just, a trial period regardless of what the flag would say. But especially, I would totally support doing this for 30 days as the Black Lives Matter flag.
Other thoughts, discussion? Colleen?
No, I, I just had to unmute myself. No, I think Dave summarized well the issues and Brendan's point about in the future taking back. I think that the policy will likely be 30-day rotations of flags. I guess that's where the protocol that leadership comes up with because that's what's happened in other places and seems to work well. So, you know, I understand the uncomfortableness for some people who are maybe on the fence and, you know, I, I just think that Dave's original motion makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Anyone else? This issue did come up in the Burlington School Board meeting when they talked about the flag. And the, the way that they took it was, you know, I guess to Ray's point, we don't know what the ramifications are. So, 30 days is a good, good timeframe to put it up, show the support, and if there are ramifications, you have an opportunity to address them. That's just my understanding of the Burlington School Board meeting where it came up.
So, Lynn, could you clarify what the vote is going to be on and what the next step is?
So, the vote is going to be on the amendment to extend the remainder, or to fly the Black Lives Matter flag for the remainder of the 2018, 19 school year. And the only other language change is that the flying is to begin within 10 days of approving this motion. Are we done pending discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. I need a count. So, can you raise your hands if you're in favor of the-
We should be, we should be clear that the vote is simply for 30 days versus the end of the school year.
No.
There will be a separate vote on the full motion.
Correct.
Correct.
The vote is for the rest of the school year?
Rest of the school year, yep. So, those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Oh, dear.
If I go to the bench, Ron? So, all those?
All those opposed signify by saying aye? Your 30 days. One, two, three, four, five.
Where was Colleen on this?
Colleen has said, I'm in favor of the 30 days.
So, she voted no on that.
So, six, so six, the motion failed.
I'm looking it up.
I think in an amendment situation, the motion fails if it's a tie.
What'd you say, Mark?
I think in an amendment situation, the motion fails if it's a tie. But I don't have Robert's rules in front of me either.
I got it right here. A tie. It might be fa- A tie. It might be faster to Google this. Oh, here we go. A tie vote defeats the motion, 6991.
So now we're back to the original motion.
Yep.
We're back to the Adds the consideration of further requests will be delayed until policy is approved and that the policy committee is charged to come up with a policy.
Yeah, I'll read the whole thing.
So a tie vote isn't a majority, and it defeats the motion.
Yep.
Good job.
Okay. So now we're adding the amendment.
The same motion.
Same motion when we get after subsection 175, no further consideration, no further consideration.
Just consideration.
No consideration of further requests will be delayed.
Consideration, considerate.
There you go.
Further requests.
Will be delayed.
Will be delayed until a CVSD flag policy is developed and approved as charged by the policy committee, as charged to the policy committee, period. All groups requesting the flying of a flag will be subject to the new policy.
Lynn, can you do me a favor and repeat the entire motion before we vote, please?
Maybe.
Okay, I will try.
You're sick, so can I help you out?
Thank you, you read.
Yeah.
Because I will be, I'll run out of breath.
You'll be sick, my friend. In absence of a policy and in recognition that it is our mission to develop citizens who live responsibly and respectfully, I make a motion to fly the Vermont State flag on the flag pole with the US flag and fly the Black Lives Matter flag for 30 days on the second flag pole at CVU with the red-white indicator flag below it. 30 days is to begin within 10 days of approving this motion, commencing on a day directed by the principal. The flag shall be flown as guided by the flag code as detailed in, but not limited to, US Code Title 36, Chapter 10, Subsection 175. Consideration of further requests will be delayed until a CVSD flag policy is developed and approved as charged to the policy committee. All groups requesting the flying of a flag will be subject to the new policy. This is the amendment that we will be voting on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
We're not voting on the amendment, we're voting on the motion.
Right, as amended.
As amended.
We didn't vote to accept that second amendment.
We didn't accept the second amendment.
Right, this is what we just made, this is what we just, Dave just read, I just asked for a second, Kelly gave the second, now we're going to discuss this addition.
Right, not the whole, not the whole motion yet.
Just this addition.
Yeah.
So all those in favor of accepting, write the, unless we have a discussion, yeah.
I got to go to moderator's call, I think.
It's all right, you're stopping. We're all right.
So, any discussion on that? Ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed. Does Dave need to read the entire proposal again?
Okay.
All right, are we done with discussion? Okay, all those in favor of approving the motion as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The absence of policy.
All right, the ayes have it. The motion passes. Thank you. Thank you, Colleen. Okay, we're not done yet. 8.3, do I have a motion to appoint Russ Capri as the voting delegate for the statewide health insurance? Second? Any discussion?
What's the requirement for this? Like, you know?
She sent me an email I hadn't read yet, but, sure.
It has to do with the new
Teacher healthcare.
Exactly, and VSBA has a voting delegate, and they sent it to the chairs and said, "You have to appoint somebody." And I thought, since Russ was head of HR, he would be the person to appoint.
He does.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, 10.0, next meeting dates. Committee meeting is April 2nd at 6:00, and our regular CVSD meeting is April 16th.
Legislative breakfast.
Oh, thank you. Legislative breakfast is Monday at 7:30 in the CVU cafeteria. I'm sorry, the CVU library.
This Monday.
This Monday. Yep. Do I have a motion to enter executive session?
So moved. For the purpose of discussing negotiations, so moved.
Okay, and we're going to adjourn from executive session, so.